My grandmother is ninety... It's our duty to go and worship her every morning, you know, to make sure that she's for us a fountain of wisdom. But here, the moment you are old, your ability to the system and your children in particular.
Is it on Facebook?
And when you have kids here, how many times do they go to Nigeria? Maybe you force them to go when they are three, ten, and then they tell you that the next time I go to Nigeria as if you die, you know?
I thought he has his own wifi.
And you think that... ...are also likely to seek followers. So, I don't want to bore you with courage too much. There is hope, and there is opportunity, and there is chance. Global movement of Nigerians, both at home and abroad, but mostly driven by those of us who have left Nigeria for a long time, who are saying that Nigeria must change, but not the change of twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. That one is chicken change. That one is... Two thousand megawatts of electricity. In fact, somebody was telling me today that it was more than that. It was about thirty-four. But that was the last phase that was delivered last week. And it was a mixture of, you know, electrical sources or, you know, power sources. They had a combination of solar energy, hydro, gas, biogas, biomass, biofuels, everything they could find, and use it to generate electricity. The same thing has happened in India. If you have seen something going on on Facebook where the Indian Prime Minister... And be happy. You can change the fortune of the country such that you come here for vacation as opposed to going to Nigeria for, you know, ski-ercation. That's what I call it. Ski-ercation is when you are traveling for vacation and you are not sure if you make it back. You are scared to go to Nigeria. That is what we have been experiencing. But the moment Nigeria gets it right, I'm not even going to compare us with Egypt or India. Compare us just Ghana. Has anybody been to Ghana in recent times? You'll be shocked and you are wondering, is it not the same Ghanaians that we used to call Ghana Must Go? Now they are doing Nigeria Must Go in Ghana. Yes, the Ghanaian government is mistreating Nigerians. They didn't even, they don't even have Nigerians in Ghana. They don't even have a chance to pack their things when they want to kick them out. They just pack them and move them out of the country. Because Nigeria has been a gigantic failure, not the giant of Africa that you were taught. So, if we don't get it right this time around, I doubt that we can get it right any time soon again. The two candidates that are looking at us, or that we are looking at as the major party candidates, one of them, we put Nigeria on Alibaba within a year. That's an article. They'll sell Nigeria on eBay, Alibaba, or Amazon. They'll finish Nigeria. Because a man who spent twenty million dollars just to buy the primary election of his party, you imagine what he would do when he gets Nigeria in his hands? He would have to recoup his investments. That's how he's wired. And if you give it to this lifeless man, Buhari, forget it. The man will flush Nigeria down the toilet. So the Nigeria you used to hear about now, you will not even be able to hear about this in another four years. And what's scary to you, these are realities that are facing us. These are facts. This is a fact of life. But if we do it right, we support ourselves, and we go for the alternatives. I would say "alternative". This country, you'll be surprised what will happen in the next four years, such that you'll be wondering why you had to sit here for two hours today waiting for this young man to come. And you'll be happy and proud of yourself that you are part of history, that you are one of the few people who sit there, who sat there waiting patiently so that you could just let us have the kind of interaction and engagement we have today. So, as I made a promise, no much talk tonight. I just came here to observe actually. And I came here to the end of the world so that I can do what they call excursion in geography that I didn't do in the investing. This is the biggest excursion that the geography students can do, to go to the end of the world. But when I got here, I discovered that you guys are actually the beginning of the world. You guys have shown me a lot of love and support. Thank you so much, Sydney, for letting us talk to you. Let me thank the organizers of this event, Benjamin. Let me thank the ladies who have made it possible, Yinka. And also my travel companion since I came to Australia, Dusy. She's been with me since I, we met in Brisbane. She engineered my entire trip before everybody got informed. And Bodhe, who couldn't make it down to this place with us, who is based in Melbourne.
Is this ten life?
And Dusy is also, who is also actually on his way here as well. And the rest of you who have... ...necessarily sacrificed to have Nigeria of our dream. What I'll tell you before I start taking questions is that I know that Nigeria is possible. In Nigeria with twenty-four hours of electricity in another two and a half years, it's possible. In Nigeria with security, such that our crime rates also will be as low as you have in Australia, even better. It's possible. In Nigeria, that we not have to go and queue up in any embassy or consulate and ridicule to get a visa. It's possible. In Nigeria, in which corrupt people are not celebrated, it's possible. In Nigeria that is restructured and exists as a federal nation, it's possible. In Nigeria where a doctor doesn't tell you to tell him what is wrong with you, but finds out what is wrong with you, it's possible. In Nigeria that can secure its agricultural sector to the point that we can have what is called food security, it's possible. In Nigeria where workers should be earning minimum wage that is equal to living wage, such that the workers can also have a workers' building in Black Town where you can eat buffet until they drive you out. This is my promise and is a covenant based upon pedigree and a history of doing what is right and integrity, capability, also what some of you like to describe as stamina because most times it was be, "How do you do it?" You know, how is it that you're in Lagos two weeks ago jumping inside the liver and two weeks later you are in Sydney talking to people? And the time difference is about twelve hours between here and Nigeria. There's about fourteen hours between here and we were on our way here asking people what time it is. It's morning on their side and it's night here. And yet, we're still alive and engaging and interacting very well. Thank you so much. And at this point, I'll take your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're glad to hear it. Okay, thank you for such an extended introduction and telling us what's happening right now in Nigeria, and we appreciate that. One of the things, please, if your phone is still on, you can put it on silent. And the question and answer session is going to be very orderly. You raise your hand, and we recognize that and pass a microphone to you. And then you ask your question. And if you have a follow-up, so he will answer. Then if you have a follow-up question, you can also put your hands up, and we recognize that so that it's orderly and everything is being livestreamed. I don't think there's any question that is a stupid question. But also, we need to be mindful of, although he's not in the office at the moment, but he's running for the highest office in our country. And we want to acknowledge that and also be mindful of the questions we put through. But let it be, those questions, if any of the other candidates are here, you want to ask them, how are they going to make this happen? And so, the bar is open. If you just want to get a drink, there's a drink there. We're still trying to work out how we can do the food at the same time. But if we finish the sessions, we can do the food. There's the food over there. Because this is really, really important, this question and answer session. Now, since I have the microphone, maybe I should start. So my name is Henry Ike. I've been fortunate to live here for a while. But I've served what has been probably twenty-seven, twenty-eight years. My two kids are born here. But I've still retained and maintained contact with Nigeria. I love Nigeria, like many people here. And this is why I took it upon myself to be part of this meeting tonight. And I've been following even before this time, you know, on YouTube. And I find that your prescription for Nigeria makes sense with me. Now Nigeria for today has been defined in three phases. Either your pride or your religion. So, how do you intend when you get into the office to...
Travelize Nigeria.
Because it's been one of the main key issues that Nigeria probably is where this is. So thank you very much. How could you, how would you do that? Thank you.
Well, I would say this, that when people don't have anything to hold on to, especially when the nation states has failed so badly, they'll hang on to a terrible vision of hope and a sense of belonging. Nigeria honestly don't give a lot of people hope. Nigeria don't inspire a lot of people. And what people do is they'll hang on to things that can keep them afloat and things that can keep them going. And in some cases, ethnicity is the only way you get a job. Your ethnic group is the only way you get love and support. It's the only way you feel like a human being. It's your last bastion of dignity. The same thing for religion. These are controversial issues. But most likely, if you are sick in Australia, you are not going to see a pastor. You know, because you will meet your pastor at the doctor's place too all the time. But in Nigeria, if you are sick because there are no doctors that are willing to help you, you go to the pastor's. In fact, if you see a doctor after a few times, the doctor will refer you to see your pastor. Because it's the only way you can get healed, right? This is my some point a little bit controversial, but this is a reality of our lives. So I'm just saying to you, Harry, that it is because there's nothing left for us. So what is left is ethnicity, is our religion, and all those things that keeps the system going. How you understand this is here. Like, when a policeman is coming to your house to help you, probably they won't ask you your ethnicity or even your skin color. But of course, they do that in some instances, don't let us forget. But generally, in most of the time, you get help. But in Nigeria today, if you are passing through the airport and you see some of my videos where I record those corrupt officials always demanding for bread at the airport, they will be speaking in their own languages, you know? They will be having conversation right in front of you so as to bypass your understanding of what kind of trouble they want to get you into. Because that's how Nigeria has been designed over the last few years to suit the agenda of those who are destroying Nigeria. They are the ones who introduce it. But what is interesting, and this is based on my experience, when it is time to share money at the top, there's no ethnicity, there's no religion. In fact, there is no country in the world where people are more godless than Nigerian leaders. When they want to do bad things, they forget God. That is why sometimes I make the controversial statement, and I have gone through it, that it looks like Nigerian leaders somehow were able to design their own gods. So you have designer gods in Nigeria that don't get upset when leaders are bad. You find somebody who has just embezzled the money made for hospital is sitting in front of the church. When the bully in that city came from prison, pastors and bishops were killing themselves to preach at his Thanksgiving ceremony. Pastors, all of them, they were doing themselves. So it's a kind of country that you have, things have really, really gone very bad and our value system completely destroyed and decimated. That's why we have that. And I think I can take the next question after saying that.
Okay, thank you for that. Cyrus has a microphone over there and I have one. So we'll take one from each side, so silence.
Sorry, I have about seven hands up from this...
Wow, we're going to be held online.
I'll start you on this table. And then one from the...
Okay, I probably would need a piece of paper and pen to try. Sorry, we're supposed to come with one, but we can't resume on the airport.
My name is Fred Bell. I'm here for a white, one of twenty-eight years. And my question is regarding the voting pattern and the way it is structured like we must say, equity state, whereby there are vote buying. How do you think you can overcome that big challenges?
Yes, thank you. Let's take three questions at a time, and then we can answer.
Listen, listen, you've got to be disciplined here. Who will come over there?
So my name is Okechukwu Uwonokan. I work with the local area coordination of the National Disability Insurance Company, agency. I've been around here for like five years. Sure, I followed you. I'm not here to unravel anything new about you. I've followed you on social media. I know where you stand on virtually every issue. But I don't mind. I just want a little bit of clarification on what you think about the Biafra and restructure. You know, Igbo people feel marginalized, and that's for good reason. Question is, what are you going to do differently that others have done that give Igbo's that sense of inclusiveness? Thank you.
One more question, yes.
The top person, tell me.
Just, my name is Calvin. I've lived here for some time. I don't want to mention the years. My question is, what do you think is a challenge that will prevent you from being the president of Nigeria?
Good question. Thank you so much. This is a...
The bottom.
My name is Rafael Osipo. I've been here for some time too. My question to you is, I know you are here to replace us, to give us some of your visions. I know right away that voting in Dasporah, I don't see, we, our votes, we even can't in Nigeria, we don't even have the system to vote overseas. What are your mechanism to be able to organize all the people Dasporah to actually vote for you?
I agree. I will start with our last question. I have no power to make an Igbo in Dasporah vote. If people in Dasporah could vote at this, in this particular election next year, I wouldn't be campaigning anymore. I would have won the election. No question about it because nobody can bribe you. They know that you have independent minds and that you have sound minds and doing well. And I have to comment by the way that those of you who have spent twenty-something years old, I mean twenty-seven years in this country, you look younger than those of us who came to America and Nigeria. What is a secret? It's just the water. Yes, and here too, yeah, air quality. So, but what I plan to do is to, as soon as I'm sworn in, walk directly to support Dasporah voting. So that people in Dasporah, who are the biggest investors today in Nigeria, are given the rights to determine the leaders of Nigeria. Because the body of Nigeria is not only on your shoulders, it's in your heart every day. You know the trick now. When you start getting those WhatsApp messages, you know? They come first as prayers and then they become proverbs. It is so important that we allow you participate in life in the country. And I feel like if Dasporahs were to be given the right to vote in Nigeria, we would have changed, Aliyah had announced. Because we would have forced so many of these leaders to do what is right with your votes, not through Western Union, which they don't respect. Vote Buy is Nigeria's newest way of manipulating the electoral process. But it has always been around with us. When people are determined to end their suffering, nobody can buy their conscience. And I will tell you that they also tried to buy votes in 2015 but because Nigerians mostly accidentally thought that Buhari were different, the people who had the most money lost the election. In fact, I have a theory that anybody that wins the Ekiti election will lose the general election. Because it is through Ekiti that they exposed their strategy for rigging the national general election. They did it in 2014, Faye O'Shea won, but Jonathan lost the general election because it was through Ekiti that people figured out the trick they wanted to use for the national election. So Vote Buy will come, but we also fear because this time around, we need total freedom and nobody can buy it off of us. And in 2015, we actually didn't have a chance to have a third alternative. But in this 2019, there are clear alternatives. What they seem several of, that the difference is clear. Difference is clear in terms of intellect, in terms of capacity, capability, and pedigree. So, I can only tell you that there are other strategies to frustrate Vote Buy, but I don't want to expose all our strategies because we are fighting against a very, very determined enemy. That we must be very strategic in exposing all of our strategies to deal with them. And the very contentious issue of Biafra is something that I have addressed several times. You see, I wasn't around when the, I was born after the war ended. So I never fought during the war. And sometimes you can even excuse my ignorance about the gravity of the war. But what I know is that you cannot kill three million people during the war, declare that the war is over, and never do anything to reabsolve the people who you fought against and think that the country will be all right. The cry for Biafra, though, is not a cry for secession as much as the cry for justice in Nigeria. Nigeria has been just to the people of the Southeast. And they are doing this systematically, systematically ensuring that there is no infrastructure that will benefit or enhance the life of an Igbo man or their progress. That you do not have airports there. I'm telling you, the lack of a second Niger bridge opening now is deliberate. That's the truth. But our brothers there are also making the mistake, you cannot be voting for people who fought war against you and expect the war to end. Buhari fought during the war. They were people who were in charge of the war and killing actively in Asaba. Abasonjo fought during the war. You understand? In fact, every other Nigerian leader somehow supported that war because in my view, the only person who was not in Igbo land who didn't support the war was Olestrinika. And they jailed him for having the tendency to oppose the war. Every other person somehow was complicit. That's the truth. And that is why when I started this whole campaign, I made it clear that first Nigeria must sit down and apologize to Biafrans. And then we must bring them into the fold by way of developing the Southeast. And then we must have concrete conversations about what Nigeria should look like. But don't let us be under any illusion that a secession will automatically bring an end to the suffering of the Southeast. The reason is this, and I'm not being naive. Nigeria has trained so many bastards in the center that when humans succeed, they will go back home and destroy the Southeast the way they are destroying Nigeria now. And I can name all their names, but I don't have time for that here. Let's discuss serious things. And if Biafra is seceding and successful and is still surrounded by the same threats of the society called Nigeria, they will overrun Biafra. That's the truth. You know, but think about this also. Some of the injustices done in the Biafran nation are done by Biafrans themselves against their own people. They order the killing of Biafran activists. They do all kinds of things, and I can name them because as a reporter, I have reported on every injustice done in Nigeria in the last twelve years, and this I have a history of that with me. So what can we do to bring back our brothers and sisters in Biafra? First is justice. Second is justice. Third is fairness. And then we must busy development. And the last thing I will say is that you people are the Igbo person, thinks that is the only person who has seceded from Nigeria. It's a lie. A lot of Nigerians have seceded from Nigeria. They are just waiting to leave. I'm telling you, a lot of Nigerians have mentally left the country. Because in Nigeria today, if you build a house, you are the one who has to provide water for yourself. So every house is like a local government. You have to provide your own security. You have to provide your own school. You have to provide Igbo your own religious place of worship within the compound. Because you constantly need to be prayed to survive anywhere in Nigeria. So, a lot of Nigerians have seceded from Nigeria. I said it, yes, there's someone who was laughing at me. I said, if they allow, if US, Australia, and Europeans allow Nigerians to leave Nigeria, say they will give you a visa if you want to leave, seventy percent of Nigerians will leave. Now don't say it. The only people that will defend. The only people that will defend are people who probably cannot physically move. Nobody to be left in Nigeria. I'm telling you, seventy percent of Nigerians will leave in this, or potentially will leave. What is that? Is that not secession? Live in it. Yes, and I can guarantee you that I will do that. I will bring back a Nigeria where not only should we have a second Niger bridge, but you have a third Niger bridge with a fast-moving train that can take you from Odisha to Lagos in two hours. Then what does you want? in two hours, then what does you want? If you can go to Kano and come back and nobody will kill you, do your business. Isn't that what we are looking for? What is Ethiopian airline in Nigeria? Is it not the airline that brings Igbo businessmen in and out of China? So if we can go and buy the best shoes in our back instead of going to Italy, what do you think the Igbo man will feel? Happy?
The same thing applies to all of that track.
Uh, said, the last question I want to answer is, what's the challenge that can make you not win this election? I want to surprise you. Come on. Yes. The challenge is you. It's not even money. This is an election that is for us to win. In my view, this is the easiest time to defeat the old, ragged, corrupt, useless leaders. If we don't defeat them, it's our fault. It might be because we doubted our ability to do it just a little bit and didn't get it. Otherwise, I've never seen at a time that is a better point of unity for the oppressed against the oppressed source in Nigeria than this time. Almost everybody is speaking with home voice in Nigeria, even those who might be articulating, they know that it's business. Because people articulating is because of what they heard happened in Portacorps that is making them to hyper-articulate. They want to collect the maximum money. But what we are telling them is that the money they are giving back to you is not their money, it is the money they stole from you that they are giving you just piecemeal of it. Where is Atticus Coco Farm? Where he made all the money that he went and spent twenty million naira in Portacorps in one day? If that happened here in Australia, they will be arresting people for two weeks because everybody that collected that five thousand would be arrested if it happened in America. To come and explain how you go and collect money that you knew was a process of corruption. That is how people are treated. When everyone went down, the typist who typed one of the letters went to jail. They ask her, did you know that the letter you were typing was aiding and abetting corruption? You cannot give excuse that, oh, I didn't know, my orgasm sent me. No, you are supposed to know because you have conscience, you have independence of mind. But look at where we are in Nigeria, people are talking about Atticus Sengue because he's giving back money he stole, just a portion of it, just a fraction of it. So I don't think that we can't win this election. In fact, it is not part of my, you know, it's not part of my thinking and planning that I will not win. As I'm here, the next time I see you here in Sydney, if I don't come back before the election, you will be as the president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. So we can take the next three questions off.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for that. I hope this being helpful. Now, the organizers are telling you the food has been on the table for about two hours. For food and safety, we want to make sure that we can have that food when it is the right time. But we don't want to as well interrupt all the, you know, the dynamics that is happening here. So just wondering, if you're very hungry, you can quietly go to the bar, I think somebody will be out there to serve you. But if you're happy to wait at the end, then we can all do it together. So what's the consensus? Yes? We wait to the end? All right, we have three people here from this table, so we do the same thing. So back to you, Adam.
Thank you. Mr. Shorire, I want to first of all salute your courage and also your integrity and of course your presence here. My, my name is Celi Alugia. I live on the central coast of New South Wales, which actually is the best part of Australia. Whenever you ever visit Australia, I will, I will be delighted to have you there. And my question, first of all, the greatest deficiency in Nigeria is the loss of compassion among our leaders. And for a lot of people, they would define compassion as your ability to recognize another human being and treat that person with care and kindness. And of course in Nigeria, you know, most of these leaders are lacking in compassion and this is the reason why you have a so-called senator or honorable member with twenty cars at home and they don't really care that the village owner in the village doesn't have any transport, so they will never think of providing transport. The same thing applies to electricity. This is the reason why they have twenty-four hours light in their homes, but they don't realize that the real Nigeria don't have electricity. I'll give you an example and the reason why I mentioned central coast. We have an honorable member of parliament, can't think of his name, just a few years ago, he actually controlled, he was a special advisor to the prime minister and he controlled a budget of thirteen billion dollars, I mean thirteen billion dollars. When he retired from parliament, he actually volunteered to become a bus driver in one of the nursing homes. He was driving buses for several years. I mean, the modern is almost late eight, late eighties now. My question is, Mr. Shorire, how, as a future leader, president of Nigeria, how do you get your level of compassion? Do you really have that compassion to serve your people? That's my question.
Thank you very much. A very good question. Okay, nice one.
Good evening. So first of all, I'm a big admirer and I've also invested in Saharan Reporters. Seeing you reminds me of two thousand and nine, I was a master student in Boskadi Lab and I set a code of inviting ten thousand people to your platform. So I'm invested in you. Three questions that border on your policies because I've read your, I've read the AAC manifesto, the AAC policy and also when you initially wrote the TIB one. And so I want to talk, I want to ask you questions about minimum wage, structure and security, but I'll start with structure because structure affects everything. I, throughout your manifesto and throughout everything you've been saying, you haven't really talked about the structure of Nigeria, the way Nigeria functions and the way government functions. And it's instructive that you're actually in Australia. Australia has a structure that Nigeria used to have. Nigeria at the beginning had the same structure that Australia has now. So in the beginning, in nineteen sixty, we had a small federal government that was hoarded up in Marina and you had big regional, regional autonomous regions, actually they were like countries. They generated their own taxes, they spent their money the way they wanted to spend it and they were very responsive to their, to their constituents and they would contribute taxes, small taxes to this federal government. The federal government had the duties of looking after the ports, had the duty of looking